Justin, ready? Do you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gar, will you do the roll call?
Hey, Brian.
Here.
Mr. Sins.
Here.
Mr. Terry.
Here.
Ms. E. Daly.
Here.
Ms. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Rock.
Alright, if there are no additions or amendments to tonight's work session agenda, then the agenda will stand as provided. Alright, is there a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from November 27th?
I have a motion to approve the minute.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. E. Daly.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Reed.
Yes.
Before we jump into the discussion items, I just want to give a quick reminder to the public that this is a work session. We will not be, there's not a, there's not a sign-in sheet for speaking. And we will not, it's our time to, as council, to discuss items. And that being said, there may be staff that we invite to speak, and some of those folks may be out, sitting next to you, so it may seem like we're interacting with you, but we are not. Alright, move into our discussion items. Rules of council. Mr. Reed, would you like to...
Want me to say something introductory? Well, you had the copy that we're working for, it's not the final draft of the rules by any means. There's still some work to be done. But it's looking pretty good in terms of being a really good draft. And most of the stuff that you see that's completed would be the final versions of that. So, you know, it is what it is, I think. I had, I had intended to get this done so you could vote on it next Monday, but I don't think that's going to happen. So, it will be carried over into January. And it's, it's not determined yet how that's going to get completed. I think you probably want to consider adding a person to the rules committee to replace the one that's not going to be there. So, I'll be thinking about who you, who you might recruit to that position. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, if you want to open the floor for comments, that would be, this would be a good time.
Yep.
Anybody, because hopefully, and this is the last thing I told the rules committee, both of us, on, on Monday, was that I hope to get some really good feedback. And I anticipated that we will have edits to the document to work over before the next meeting. But the next meeting of the rules committee is going to be after the Monday council meeting. So, we'll have one more, I'll have, you know, till the end of the year to help with it. And so we'll see how it goes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
So, I'll go ahead.
Oh, I had a question about, like, the addition of a vice president for council.
Yeah. If anybody in the committee wants to answer besides me, I encourage full participation. I suggested it to the committee, and we debated it, and, and it was, it was a close call in terms of the opinions, but the, but it was unanimous that they wanted to try this and see, you know, how council received it, to put it in there. So, Mr. Terry, did you have something to say?
Oh, yeah, I think, I think we should, this is draft, right? Personally, I don't think we need it, so I would remove it. And I think that as we get to the final, depending on how Mr. Daly, yourself, Mr. Harron, and Mr. Lewis, you know, feel, I, I feel like it's not necessary personally, so I would, when I see the final, I think if, if the majority of council wanted it, though I wasn't going to fight, like, I'm not, it's, it's not like a drop dead point to me, I just don't think it's necessary. It'd be my stance.
Yeah, the, the whole idea of having a vice president was to have someone to fill in in the absence of the president. Like, if there was no, no president here at this work session, then whoever was the vice president, this would be about the only thing he would ever do, would be to chair the work session meeting. And you wouldn't have to worry about who's going to do that. You know, in the absence of both of them, then you would have to elect a chairman pro tem, just for that meeting, to, to chair the meeting. So, it's, it's also useful in terms of recognizing someone on the council to be in a position of responsibility other than his big responsibility of being a council member. So, that was the whole purpose of it. And so, from those two things, it seemed to be useful. But if council doesn't want to bother with it, then, you know, I said it was kind of a close thing.
We can always amend it when we want to. And then, the other two things that I'm, like, I would want changed, like, kind of partly, is, so, the wording on the presiding officer, it was my belief that we should do that it's the mayor unless council elects someone else, so that just clears that up. I think it says this way, it's the president of council unless we decide someone else. I think we just, we would literally every first meeting just pick someone else, so like, I get it if we have a rogue mayor, I don't think Mayor Carney will do this, but if we have a rogue mayor, we want to be able to put checks and balances, but it's again, it's just for presiding officer, it's just for who reads the agenda thing. So, in my opinion, we'd switch that. And the same thing on the committees, we have it, like, kind of backwards. We have it, the council decides unless we decide else, like, the charter calls for boards, commissions to be by the mayor. Spiritually, when we were doing that, I think there's quite, quite a few members of charter on here. We were thinking committees, boards, and commissions, unless I was. So, I would switch that and have it be the mayor. And then, you do want to put maybe some protection in that says, okay, so the mayor doesn't like a committee, she doesn't like marketing communications, so she just never appoints someone to it. We should be allowed to appoint in their stead, if it is her stead. But I would just invert the language to put the power, because realistically, I wasn't even looking at it when we wrote the charter. I guess, I, I consider boards to be committees, but I guess they are different, boards, commissions, committees. So, those are the three things I would change. And then my other statement would be, once the rules committee has a draft, right? We should probably just send it to the law director for review before we take it back up over the beginning of the year. So, realistically, I don't think we have much to debate tonight. Those are the things I would change. And then again, our law director may come and say, well, you can't do this, that, and the other thing, because we don't want to be a violation or anything, so we'll pick it up in January.
I mean, I agree with the appointments by the mayor as well. I mean, that's what the charter commission had decided at the time, so...
I'm sorry.
That the mayor appoint the, you know, the board members.
The boards of commissions. And it's very, very important to look at the exact wording on that, because that's what the lawyers do when they, when they do this. And the difference is that the boards and commissions are charter authorized. Committees are committees of council. Council is in charge of those committees. And they have nothing to do with the charter. They're just the ability of the, of the council to appoint and bring up and design committees as they wish. So, that was the reasoning, is to give committees, or the council, more control over the vetting of nominees to committees and who exactly would be recommended for it. And I thought that was an important thing to do, because after all, it is council's responsibility when they appoint a committee to make sure it works and that has the right people on it. So, that was, that was pretty much a straight line from committees to council there. So, that was the reasoning behind that. And it was, I must say, everything the committee did, and every, every word in the document that you see was unanimous, unanimously agreed to. So, I'm kind of surprised to hear any, any negative comments about what's in there or any, any things that you might change, that because, you know, you don't think it's good, because...
Getting a draft to hear, I, I think Mr. Sins would, will align with this, that I vocally said this more than once, that the charter always said this, like, I don't think this is, if this is, I apologize for the first time you think you're hearing this, but I made it clear that we could put a draft together, but I've always thought that, and that's, this, even if this, even if the charter didn't say committees, I sat on the charter, but the spirit of that meant committees, I mean, I, Mr. Daly said on that, Ms. Ferguson said on that. Wouldn't you agree that we all thought that committees were a part of it? I mean, I'm okay with clarifying it here, I'm just, I don't, I don't think this is...
No, fine, I didn't mean to object to your comments at all, but it was a little surprising to hear a couple of things.
Well, you ask for people's opinions and just let them have his opinion.
Hey, it's not my document, it's the, it's the rules committee's document, so don't think that it's my document, it is not.
And, and, and we did have lots of discussion about, in particular, those two. And we decided, I don't know that we unanimously decided it would be, we decided that it would be okay to put in the wording as it is in this draft for further discussion.
Okay, fine, you know, whatever you decide, I've made that up here for the last month.
Yeah.
That, that it's, it's your guys' stuff, I'm just helping with the work. Now, I have, I have no axe, no dog in this fight, I guess, is the way. I, I would say it's whatever you want, I just want you to get it the best way you can get it. So, there you are.
Thank you. Any other comments, any other discussion?
So, so what, what is council of a mind to do now? Is, are, are you approving the document or just waiting until January to make any significant suggestions about changes? Because we can get those done fairly easily this month, in a way that works with the document as opposed to next month. If you have a suggestion for change, then this would be a good time to, to voice it and, and just communicate to the rules committee that, that you don't like this and you want it changed, okay? Or you would prefer that it be changed.
Yeah, I, I think based off of some of the feedback we got tonight, that we could make modifications to those two sections that were mentioned tonight, ensure of the wording on those, and then I...
Send it to the law director.
What, yeah.
I would then send the draft to the law director.
Okay, fine, send that draft to the law director, so...
That would be good.
Yeah, I don't want to table this till the, till next year, I want to, we've got momentum, let's, let's take the feedback that we got.
Okay, here's, here's the thing, then, that we probably should get together between now and next council meeting to get those, those on paper, whatever you think should be changed in those, so that can be done before next council meeting. Okay, because if I don't know what is going to be changed, I can hardly change it. So, and I hate to suggest just sending an email, because the minute you communicate with each other, you're violating sunshine laws, so that you are in agreement on, on what gets to be changed. So, we kind of have to have to schedule a meeting, if you want to do it that way. Like I said, it's your, it's your party. And what, however you want to decide to do it, then we'll do it that way. If, if you want to individually send me drafts of what you would like the wording to be in the sections that you're concerned about, then I can work from those drafts. But don't communicate with each other about this outside of an open meeting. So, does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright. Moving on to our second discussion item, the noise ordinance. Ms. Luton, would you like me to cue this up a little bit?
Yeah.
Alright, so, the noise ordinance, we took that back, we looked at some of the, the issues that were, our police department was having, we listened to what they were saying from a subjective versus objective view, and we talked to our legal counsel, and with the input that we got, we came up with the idea to, to, the decibel meters and put that decibel reading in there. And then, we went back and forth on source versus receiving. So, that's the, that's the, the major changes in there. And then we cleaned up some of the wording, and then I know wording was cleaned up. So, is there anything else?
Yeah, we added some clarifying language about decibel meters, what they are, how they're calibrated, cleaned up some of the more confusing language about permitted events. And then really, we just modeled the decibel meter readings to what similar communities do that seem to be working for them. This is just a proposed version of where we are in the process. Do you have anything to add?
And I know that, I know that you looked at a lot of different noise ordinances, that there wasn't just, it wasn't just looking at ours and making modifications, that it was a review of quite a few, including ones that were submitted.
Mr. Sins, did you...
Yes.
The two things we talked about in rules committee on this document?
Yes.
About the receiving and emanating.
Yeah, in the, in the chart, that is a typo. At the top left corner. Yeah, it should, it should say receiving.
I, I found a couple other little, that I, you know, when we get it into final form, we can make tweaks, but it's just, I mean, just something as simple as we, we define noise, but then we alternate calling it emission and sound elsewhere. We just want to get a consistent.
Consistent usage, okay. The other, another wording thing is the use of the word property, and as in receiving property. And then we have a land use category described as districts. And that's a little troubling for me, because I think what you're alluding to is, is zoning districts in there. And if it's a residential district, I, I'm fine with that. If it's a business, mixed-use districts is where the problem comes in. So, where are music, are mixed-use districts?
We don't currently have any, but we will in the future.
So, there are none. Well, let me ask, in the area of Maine and Chillicothe, you can't get a block without running into residents. So, is that, it's not, at this point, a mixed-use district. So, if we could get rid of the word districts, inherent and used property, residential property, and business property, and industrial property, instead, it would, the, the, the reason I'm asking that because residential requirements are different from business requirements. And if you overlay a business permissions onto a residence, that would seem to be inappropriate to me. They would have, they would have a different standard than all the other residences who are in residential districts. So, it can be fixed by just using the word property instead of districts.
Yes, the intention here was the word zoning. The mixed use will be, you know, there is a property that has a restaurant at the bottom and apartments at the tops. Those will have a different number than residential or business, so I think if we clean it up with zoning or property, that should...
So, you think you can use the word property instead of districts, or are you saying you can't do that?
We originally had to choose a zoning district, so we'll probably just put those back in, because it'll still be, your house is still zoned A1 or A2, that's the receiving.
So, your house has a different zoning, even if it's in a business district or an industrial district?
You can't have a house, by definition, once it's a residential, it's zoned residential unless it's mixed use, is what you're saying. So, you can't have a residential unit in a business district, that's a...
Okay, so you're going to somehow have a squarely line around the northeast part of Long City?
These are zoning districts.
To, to separate those, because, because it, it, it's like, you go up north Chillicothe, you have business district, residential district, business district, park, okay? So, that's, it's needs, you need to be clear about, you know, what that district's going to be. If it's going to be broken up into districts like that, business district, residential district, business district, then fine, it's, you have only residences in the residential district and no residences in the business district. Okay, because that's where the problem with this wording is going to come in. If you put out residents, the zoning, the, the sound ordinance applying to that business district is going to affect the residents if it's by district. You see what I mean, or am I getting it wrong?
Yeah, if you live in a house and you're hearing noise and you call, you'll, the responding person will look at the residential noise level.
Okay, it needs to say that in here.
Yeah.
And with, with words, like, a house, a residence in a business district gets the residential district requirements. It doesn't say that in here, so that needs to be changed.
It'll be the receiving land use.
Yeah.
That's what...
Well, receiving property, okay? As opposed, land use is described as districts here. And it needs to be the classification of the resident, of a, of the property that's receiving the noise. It can be either residential, business, or industrial. So, that needs to be clarified, otherwise you're going to have the situation I described to you. Business district, it's a house in it, it's going to get overlaid with the, with the noise requirements for a business district. Unless you put it in here specifically what that requirement, because as I read it now, that's what it says, okay? There's no exceptions. I know you intended that, but it doesn't say that in the ordinance.
Yeah, we can look that up.
Okay? Now, when I do research on this kind of stuff, I run into legal websites that say one of the ways to write an ordinance is, is to make the first paragraph a purpose declaration of what the purpose of this noise ordinance is. And ordinarily, and a lot of times it's not necessary, but for this one, it is necessary to have a purpose statement in this document, in my opinion. So, let me just ask the people who've worked on this, what, you know, without having it be official to put in the document, what you think the purpose of this document is? Okay, let me suggest what I think it's, it should be for, and that it is for, is to protect the residential property owners from excessive and unreasonable noise. And that's, that's what should, this noise, otherwise there's no reason to have it.
I would think that it would be so that residential and business can coexist together would be the purpose.
Yeah, that's, that's, and that's, it does address all three of those. So, purpose would be to protect property owners from unreasonable noise from other sources. So, I'm just suggesting that, you know, the committee can work on it, or whatever the committee is. But without that, it's, it's, it gets a little wondering what, because of the different things that are in it and the different way it's been used, what the purpose of it is. If it's, if you clearly say that this document, the purpose of it is to protect property owners, be whatever they are, from unreasonable noise, then you, then if a court looks at this and they have questions of what's, what's this for, they can go to the purpose and say, well, this is intended to protect property owners from unreasonable noise. And that's a narrow view of what any kind of potential lawsuit or court action might run into. They have a specific instruction, these are, the purpose of it is to protect property owners from unreasonable noise. So, anything that's, looks funny in it that doesn't really apply to that, you know, they could, they could possibly ignore. Or if they have questions about what that means, why is that in there? No, no, it's supposed to be in there to protect residential property owners. So, I, I am going to end up this discussion suggesting that this go to rules committee for vetting, because I have at least eight issues with it, that are serious issues for this, because the noise in the village is a serious problem. It, I, I know you know it's a serious problem, and I know you know how serious it is. So, that problem needs to go away. The police department needs to have confidence and their authority to issue citations when there is violations of the noise, and they can come from any place, the noise issues. And I'm sure they do, in, in various other locations within the village.
Why go to the rules committee?
Because...
Or council. We're the ones that's supposed to look at the ordinance, not three individuals that are off of council.
Okay.
I think it should be all of council, it looks like, if there's not just three individuals.
It's your choice what you do. The usefulness of having a committee, we can meet for an hour and a half and talk only about this document and get, and do, go away and do research and have some intelligent conversation about what the rules, what this ordinance is all about. And to be honest with you, you typically don't find that in a council discussion. There may be one or two people prepared to discuss it in detail and have done the work, but the rest of, of council members tend to look at the document and glaze over and flip pages and say, okay, I glanced through that document, I, I can talk about that. Or they talk about it without even having done that, based on their knowledge of common knowledge, just everyday experience. The, the committee function is to go into more and more accurate research on these topics and be able to talk about them and make sensible decisions. But if you want to do a council discussion, then plan the time to do it and take it seriously.
So, Mr. Daly, it's a disagreement on how Mr. Reed sees the rules committee versus other members of the rules committee. The majority of the rules committee believes the rules committee is a special just-to-write-rules committee.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought was good.
Yeah.
I thought this was a one-time committee that probably won't go beyond after we set these rules up.
That is how it's going to be, because, I mean, the two of the members of rules committee think that, and the third isn't going to be here in January. So, if we want to have some subcommittees to do these type of special things, we'd have to create that, and we'd have to create it with much more definition than we created the rules committee. When we created the rules committee, we just kind of did it ad hocly and, you know, as a very, in my mind, a very discreet task. And it's not a standing committee, it's nothing else.
That's exactly what I thought it was.
So, that confusion, it's just a disagreement on what the rules committee is. Like I said, it's not really worth debating, because it's going to go away. Saying that, if we ever want to create special committees to tackle tasks, if we decide, I, I don't see a terrible thing about it if you have a dedicated group that want to tackle it, but eventually, eventually it has to come here for discussion and everything. This has been discussion life anyways, I don't know why we would need to create another subcommittee after doing all this. For me, and, and we can get into the merits of this, but again, this is something that's not even had first reads. This is really something that we picked up after the end of the year. So, realistically, it, it's probably not even worth debating too much, like, but, I mean, that would be kind of my thought.
So, the levels that are in the table? So, you've looked in research to other communities, and that's where those levels came up with?
Yes, these are very similar to other communities. These are also based on real world. We purchased two decibel meters and people have walked around uptown and make sure these numbers were not unreasonable. Original suggestions were even a little higher than this, and we took them down based on it being receiving land use and the, just what we see in other places.
Why did you switch to receiving?
Um, so, we, getting into where property lines are, 50 feet from property lines, where you're standing out on a property, kind of created a lot of confusion that we didn't want to put on the officers, whereas they could respond to a complaint and hear it there.
Yeah, totally fair, that's what the police department wants. For me, I always thought it would just be simpler to do it from the source, because you could just go to one place and say, this state, well, we're talking about states, so this state is producing it, this, here's a violation, as opposed to where are you going, where's the wind blowing, everything like that. It just seemed easier to enforce to go to a location, but if, if that's what you guys want, I'm not going to, you guys are the experts that have to actually enforce it. It just seemed easier to me always to be able to go to the one location that's producing it and say, yes or no, you're a higher level.
Mr. Mr. Terry, when we, when that, when that discussion happened, our legal counsel explained the nuance of... explained the nuance of where on the on the source property, you know, is it at the property line? Is it at the, you know, the source of the sound, is it the source of the property, you know what I mean, like, and so it got.
You guys, you guys have obviously done the work and vetted it, so I'm not, I'm not challenging it at all.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
It seemed easier to me, do you guys say teaser this way, teaser this way?
If someone's called into a resident, residential home to do the, you know, that's where they're going to be standing, it makes sense to do the to do the reading there where the.
Well, to me, that makes sense as well if the complaint is, go to where the complaint is being called from instead of at the source.
Yeah, that's why I brought up the purpose of the ordinance is to protect the property owners from unreasonable noise, and that automatically implies receiving location. I mean, it's makes no difference to the receiving location if they can't hear it. What the property owner is, who is the point source of the noise is doing. That's a health and safety issue if it's excessive there. So let me ask about some wording, you want to do a vetting of this document in the council meeting, that's fine. The words about talking about sustained length of time, this is a little confusing to me. And exactly what you mean by doing that, and in particular, the one sentence in in paragraph F says that measurements shall be taken over a length of time not less than two minutes and no greater than ten minutes, and I'm not sure why that restriction is in there at all, because if you want to take a measurement for fifteen minutes, what's the, what's the deal here? I'm not sure, I understand maybe the minimum of two minutes to get, you know, some some base readings of it, that might be enough, and depends on what the kind of noise, the character of the noise that's being complained about. But to limit it to ten minutes, I don't get that. And then that same wording occurs in the table. It says at a sustained length of time between two and ten minutes, and I'm not sure what that means. That's like a legal statement in this document. And so I don't know, maybe somebody could tell me what was intended by that. Does the noise have to have to be sustained noisy, a violation, for two to ten minutes during that entire time? Or I I I just don't get that.
I believe that was related, I believe that was related to an officer's time, how long are they going to be standing there with a with a meter?
Right, and that's what the attorney paid to.
Yeah, again, that was came from counsel.
Attorney, I mean, we're not staying for thirty minutes waiting for a noise order or for I think we we put that in there is because we can get there in two minutes and the noise, there's no noise at that time. Well, then all of a sudden it starts playing, we can stay there for ten minutes, but we're not staying here for thirty minutes waiting for, you know, for the noise to go up and down.
Okay, so so that means, and I I have to ask these questions, Chief, because it doesn't explain it in the document. Okay, what that is all about.
Okay, then I don't have nothing to do with the document, right?
I understand, but your understanding of what it says is important. So you're you're saying that if it if it and forgive me, if you're saying that, okay, you're willing to be there for ten minutes, and if you hear it within or you measure it within that period of time, then you're okay with dedicating that ten minutes to that call? But you don't want to go beyond ten minutes for the call? Is that, you know, I just want to understand what you're saying.
I don't want to necessarily put Chief on on, he did not come up with this wording.
Okay.
So this was, this was, since I was reading other documents, this was suggestion from legal counsel on having, it it just can't be open-ended. So there was a discussion about what is a good amount of time and looking at other noise ordinances that seem to be standard.
Okay, so so what does that mean that?
So between two minutes and ten minutes, they're going to take readings, and if they fall within that.
Does the noise have to be a violation for the entire eight minutes between two and ten?
No, no.
Or can be it intermittent?
Intermittent.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm not going to be silly here, but I think this is an issue that especially since it it is kind of conflicts with the other statement in in paragraph F, that you're just going to take measurements for the two to ten minutes, and then you have this any time between two and ten minutes that the noise occurs, then, you know, you can acknowledge it, which seems arbitrary to me.
It's not that they're going to stand there for two minutes and then go away and then come back. It's it's that in between that period of no less than two minutes and not greater than ten, they're going to send stand there with a noise meter and say, oh, yes, this violates the noise.
Okay, then why not say that in the ordinance?
It does, it does.
It doesn't, no, it doesn't. It says at a sustained length of time between two and ten minutes. That's all it says, is that you're going to measure it between two and ten minutes, and and if it occurs in that interval, then it's going to be a violation. If it occurs at one minute or at eleven minutes, it's it's what? Okay, the only allowed, what you just described was an allowable time between two and ten minutes when you're going to measure. Okay, that doesn't compute.
Yeah, because because I think you're misunderstanding.
I'm trying to understand.
I don't know how to make you understand because.
I mean, it's it's implied that you're taking readings between two and ten minutes.
That if it falls in there, then. Why can't you, what's wrong with one minute? What's wrong with eleven minutes? If there's a problem there.
I don't know how to explain it to you in terms of.
I don't know if I understand this this requirement here because it it not only is not clear, it doesn't say what you described to me. And it needs to say that in the ordinance so that people understand this. It doesn't, it's not clear if that's what you intended.
When an officer shows up to a call.
And it differs from what it says.
Frank, let me explain, let me try and explain since you're not understanding. When an officer shows up to a call of a noise complaint, they are going to get out of their car, they're going to fire up the noise meter, and they're going to stand there. And they're not going to leave for at least two minutes. So if that noise happens immediately, as soon as they turn on the light, whoop, that's a violation. It's not that they're going to be like, I can't read this yet, it's not been two minutes. Okay, it's been two minutes, I can now start. No, they're going to start as soon as they turn on the meter, they're going to start listening, and they're not going to leave within, like, they're not going to be like, I'm here long enough, it's been two minutes, I'm out of here. They're, they're going to stick around at least two minutes.
I would never be able to get that explanation out of reading the ordinance. The point is that you have to get that out of the ordinance. It doesn't require a council member to come and explain what that really means. The ordinance should be clear enough that everybody knows who's affected by this, what's going to happen.
All right, well, we'll defer, we'll defer to our.
That's what you have to do with.
Our legal counsel will make sure.
With legislation.
That it is, that it is, if there, if it, we really need to to clear that up, we'll 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 take a look at that and dig deeper.
Okay. All right, now, another issue with this is the quiet time, which is designated as eleven to seven. Well, first of all, there's a big mistake in your table in the mixed use category. You have eleven AM to seven AM. And then you have seven AM to eleven AM. So it just needs, I don't know what you were thinking there when you wrote that, but obviously it's a mistake. So we need to get that fixed.
They have different numbers based on the time.
Yeah, well, eleven AM to seven AM is is in the morning to seven AM the next morning, okay? And seven AM to eleven AM is a three-hour, four-hour interval in the morning.
That's, that's a big deal, eleven.
Okay, you can fix that, I'm sure. So this is what I mean by legislation coming to council that's not ready to be for anything.
This is a discussion. Before. That's why I'd like, thank you for bringing that up, yeah, we caught some things.
Well, let's go to something else then, appreciate that. Now, if I were to ask you, you know, the the thing we had a discussion about ambient noise level, the forty, the fifty DBs in a residential area from eleven PM to seven AM, first of all, I think that should be nine PM. It's nine PM other places in the ordinance for different other sound. In the in the ordinance that exists now, it's nine PM all over the place in several different places. So I'm not sure what you were thinking with setting eleven PM as a as a as an hour for the quiet time to begin. Does anybody have any comments on that? Okay, well, just, I'm not going to be here for the for the amendments to this, and you wouldn't probably pass them anyway, but nine PM is a very decent time, especially in a residential district where kids go to bed sometimes before nine PM. And I see no reason to change that on the weekends because they're still going to bed early. So my suggestion, recommendation would be to change all the eleven PMs to nine PMs to protect the residential properties from unreasonable noise. Okay. All right, so if I were to ask you, let's assume that fifty DBs is the level, I, all the documentation, I'd read forty DBs. Forty DBs is the is the is the level in a in a quiet residential neighborhood. And so the level of noise should be set at forty, in my opinion. Let's just say it's fifty, though, for the sake of argument, that if the level of sound in the, in a, let's say, quiet residential district you measured, and it comes out fifty DBs. So let's say a fifty DB noise arrives on that property. What's the meter going to say that the noise level is? If I want to take a guess.
If you said fifty, it would be fifty?
That would not be the right answer.
Was it your question?
Pardon me?
So maybe we need, maybe we need more information.
Well, that's why, this is the point I'm trying to make, Mr. Sensis, that by trying to impose a DB meter measurement and use that to determine if someone is violating the law is not necessarily the best way to do it. The correct answer is is fifty-three. Because the noises add together, but they don't add together as linearly, they add together logarithmically. And this is, this is science, this is not, this is not guesswork. The two noises blending together at fifty DBs, it's it's always going to be three DBs more if you get two identical noises going together. So even though you have a fifty DB noise, which would be legal, and a fifty-degree ambient noise, your meter would read fifty-three, fifty-three DB. And so you would have to order a citation to the to the point source of the noise. When in fact, the noise arriving there, but that's the way the ordinance is written. The noise on the property is fifty-three, it's it's being proximately caused by the arrival of the new fifty DB noise. So even though it's fifty DBs coming from the source, it's still causing a fifty-three DB DB degree reading on the receiving property. So this is why working with with some technology that you don't fully understand or haven't researched, sometimes can it can work backwards on people, on the on some people. So.
We can add a correction for ambient conditions.
I want to set it forty-seven so the three escalator gets it to fifty. So we're perfect.
Yeah. That might. Now, the other thing I want to say, and the last thing you'll be thankful to hear, I'm sure, is that the clearly audible standard would not have that problem. Okay? That that you're in a fifty-degree ambient noise, which is very, very quiet, you have a very, very quiet sound arriving, and you probably wouldn't hear it. So that's why, and and there's other applications of the clearly audible standard that would be very important to pay attention to.
Are you saying that, just just to clarify, you're saying you're proponent of the current, the current ordinance?
I'm I'm actually of the of the of the the opinion, Mr. Terry, that you could do either or. Okay? Either, because there will be DB readings that will be clear and 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 fifty DBs, and you can still clearly hear a sound arriving.
Sure.
Okay? So if you did either or, you would protect the property from the noise that's in the existing standard. So either, if it's either clearly audible and the complainant is annoyed with it, and the police officer, let's say, can hear it also, that's very straightforward. Nothing bad than the human ears for detecting sound, not DB meters or anything else. So if you put clearly audible or reaching a reading on the DB meter of whatever you want to set the standard for, then that would cover both bases, and you would not have people saying, but I can hear it. Okay?
I think I think I think the point of, and and I don't necessarily disagree with you that we don't, the decimal readings aren't wrought with, you know, interpretation and things like that. I think I think the issue at hand that the group was trying to get to, that worked on this, was the reasonable person standards is subjective, they were trying to add objectivity to a world of subjectivity. Don't get me wrong, I walk around with a decimal reading, I hear what you're saying. I that the reading of the decimal isn't a perfect representation of the noise at the receiving location. I don't disagree with you at all. I think that the group that worked on this, all they were trying to do is add some objectivity to a subjective world. I'm not sure it's better, we probably won't know until it's actually enacted, we try it. But to be, but I don't disagree with you that there that there's probably issues with it.
No, thank you, Mr. Terry, for those comments. My my whole point in this is the purpose of this ordinance is to protect the residents on those residential properties. Okay? And everything in this ordinance should be measured against that. Does it succeed, or are there situations where it can fail? I'll give you one more example. If you have an ambient noise level fifty, fifty DBs, and let's say you have a two different noises being made, and that's eminently possible, the the DB meters are not discriminating in what they're reading, they're reading a sum noise for you. They're not telling you where the offending noise is coming from, and if they're very close together, one is, let's say that the standard is 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 fifty DBs, and you have a sixty-degree or DB noise coming at you, and you have perhaps a fifty-degree, it's not going to tell you which one, you're not going to be able to distinguish even with your hearing which one is the offending noise from reading the DB meter. And maybe not even from, you're going to have to do some extra work to figure out which one is is causing the problem. So it's another, it's another FYI on DB meters. They're not a perfect solution, they're not a perfect instrument, they work in ways that that I don't fully understand, and I don't believe anybody here does either. So before you write a noise, an ordinance allowing that meter reading to dictate fines for people, it should be clearly understood and the ordinance be written in a way that accounts for that. I think the clearly audible standard should be included in the ordinance as as a backstop for whatever additional stuff that you might be able to add to it. Mr. Chairman, I get back the floor, thank you for the time.
Any additional comments?
When were you thinking about bringing this to a reading?
Well, it sounds like we've got some cleanup to do on it, and then we'd like to.
What cleanup do we, just the script or now the AMPM thing?
Just to grab or to clarify this.
The district. So probably like the first meeting in January, not Monday?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right, our final discussion item is the legislative timeline for the amendment of the codified ordinance in regards to the addition of the chapter eleven eighty-five dot oh-six Uptown Commercial Foberley District. And I believe Ms. Lupton has some comments.
Thank you, I just wanted to provide a couple clarifications from things that were said last meeting on November twenty-seventh. The certified local government conversation, I stand behind my desire to not pursue that. The certified local government conversation, I stand behind my desire to not pursue that certification. It's costly and time-consuming to the village. Spoke to the Ohio History Connection, they let me know that only $98,000 is available statewide each year. I've spoken to other municipalities who are CLGs and they do not find it beneficial. One person I spoke to had worked in a community for 12 years and no one had ever received a grant. If grants are received by building owners, they can only be used for historical purposes, not for plumbing or electrical, bringing things up to code, ramps, concrete, any of those items. The village becomes the grant administrator and the building owner has to go through a competitive bidding process for that project. This is not something that people I've talked to, who usually have aggressive timelines, contractors they trust seem to be interested in. I do believe that the CLG conversation should be separated from the DRB conversation overall. The goal of the district rewrite was to make it easier to invest in our uptown district. Plain and simple, we're not trying to demolish any buildings, we're not trying to build a glass skyrack that man and chiller coffee. The goal is to retain the historic character of the district, help get rid of some of the red tape with the process. We can need to promote investment in the area. Saturday night was a great example of what happens when businesses and the government and the community comes together. Our shops are, have active storefronts, people are supporting our local businesses. That was really great to see. The goal is set that's to continue this trend. And I don't want it insinuated that we were trying to do anything different with the rewrite of this code. The comments suggesting that staff member was doing something that council wasn't desiring was not appreciated. We reached out to everyone we can think of, business owners, building owners, and then we created a product to just be presented and discussed upon. Dissent is always welcome, but minimizing efforts, intentions, values of staff is not. And I apologize to Mr. Hutchinson for not sticking up for him that night during those comments. And I want to move on from that conversation and continue the, the good discussion. I think we'll end up in a productive place for the uptown district. That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
So the only thing we didn't touch on was the actual timeline.
And now we're gonna move into.
Okay, now we're gonna do the, I thought that was the timeline.
No, no, this was the preamble. That was, that was the preamble.
Sorry, 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 I was like, I thought this was, okay.
But we'll move into that discussion then.
Legislative-wise, I believe if you'd like, we can put a backlink for our first reading for December 11th meeting. Just wanted to make sure before we did that, that that's council's desire, if there, if there are substantial changes to the code, we will have to take it back off, but Derek had heard anything?
So, so real quick, and just checking with, and I checked with Paul on this, so the law says when a plan and zoning recommendation comes, we have, I'm gonna say some stuff, but I just re-read it, you know, so hopefully I'm gonna say it correctly. We have 60, 45 or 60 days to hold the public hearing. We held the public hearing. That, that legislation has not been instantly turned into a pumpkin, allowing us time to still consider that recommendation. I would assume, and this is where I'm looking at my law director, if we determine to make significant changes to the planning and zoning recommendation, that would take a supermajority of five members to change it. To simply vote down a recommendation, it would take four votes. So regardless of the timelines, I think we have the time.
Let me clarify that, to vote down, you just, you just not, need not to give it four votes, okay? It's there for approval. If you don't, if it doesn't get four votes.
Sure, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. So, so to adopt a recommendation, and I'm only looking at this way because Mr. Harriman's on plan zoning, we need four votes. To modify, we would need five votes. And if we outright reject, it would have to go, it would either stay the way it is, if that's everyone's purview, or it has to go back to planning and zoning and go through the process again. So I guess in saying that, is that all correct?
Yeah, it'd be, you just, yeah. You have to have four votes, you either have four votes to affirm it, or you have five votes to modify it.
Perfect.
And you, you don't have to worry about the negatives.
So from a timeline of this group, I, I know a few of us was, was okay with having a first reading of it already because we still have the opportunity to actually vote it up or down. I guess to those individuals that voted not to, to remove it from the agenda, what, what needs to happen to get it on the agenda? Because even if we wanted to vote it down, or you would, you, you will have the opportunity to vote it down, but we're actually now in an odd situation because frankly, because of the decision to remove it from the agenda, we have a planning and zoning member that's coming on council. So now, if I understand it correctly, that person will most likely refrain from voting. So now, to vote on this in January, we're gonna need a supermajority, no?
No, they don't have to re.
They don't have to remove.
No, Mr. Harriman would not have to recuse himself.
Awesome, that's even, that helps us. So I, I guess my question to those that did not wanna consider for a first reading, like, are we, are you guys now in a position that you wanna consider this, or would you like to try to modify it? Again, we need five votes to modify it because we've had the public hearing at this point. So I guess that would be, for my timeline, even if we wanted to vote it down, I was okay with it being read because we've had the opportunity to vote it, we need four votes to pass it, to affirm it, or five to modify it. So I guess that would be my open question to those.
I don't think those rules apply to this.
What, what?
Or to, or to the principle of injection, to the, to the way the zoning code operates, would operate, is those aren't things that would ever come to council, what the approvals are. If you're talking about this.
I'm talking about this legislation.
Okay, it's up to you to get it on the agenda.
Yes.
First of all, and then those things come into play.
Correct.
To amend it or to approve it, or, or it doesn't apply. So, but for when we do that business with, I have an alternative proposal that could solve some of the issues with this, and there, I have a visitor at the last meeting had two pages of problems with this ordinance and they're real. And I have at least one page, maybe I, I generalized a little bit. And so I would like to present that proposal before you make a decision to put this on the agenda for next meeting, especially. So, let me, let me do this, let me, let me, and this will take maybe five minutes. The principal problems, I'll just list three of, of the, of the many that are here. That this ordinance removes council's role in overseeing the administration and the planning and zoning commission as it pertains to the commercial district, okay? It specifically excludes council from having any impact on that, on that, on that process. Administration is gonna be vetting or looking at these applications and approving or disapproving and never, council will never even know that, that that's going on unless one of their constituents complains. The Planning and Zoning Commission is not required to inform council of what it's doing as far as development. And it's specifically and intentionally, I believe, written that way to get council out of the way from this process, that they have a free ride, a freeway, if you will, to do the development they wanna do in the commercial district without interference or any political activity in the village. That's the way it's written and it, it appears to me that was the intent that it, that it be done that way. Number two.
You're saying this new ordinance was written that way?
The ordinance? Yeah, it's written that way. There's no role for council in that approval process. The, the applications go to either the, 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 the development, the planning manager, the zoning manager, or they go to the zoning commission. They rule on it. If it's appealed, it goes to BCA. If BCA is still a problem with whatever decision they make, their option is to go to court. There's no option for council in there. And that's, that's gonna be the law if you pass it. I don't think council can give away that power to intervene in order or review of a process that they can see is going off the tracks. They will lose that, so that's one reason by itself why you shouldn't have put this on the first reading and listen to the alternative that I have in a minute. So the ability to control and participate in the planning and development in the uptown district arguably will go away. I mean, there may be a way, you can write an ordinance to do it, to, to affect the administration and the planning and zoning commission. Otherwise, you don't have an option to do that. The, the, the ordinance 1185.06 is inconsistent with the opinions expressed by residents in the comprehensive plan and in the uptown plan that was finished in December of 2022. That was almost unanimous as the wording in the comprehensive plan, that the residents of this village want their buildings, their historic buildings rehabilitated and restored. And they want a historic district in the uptown. That's, that is so, when I talk to people on the street about, "Do you know what's going on with the historic district? You're gonna lose it." That's, yes ma'am, you will. Because decisions are gonna be made, they have been made in the past and I see no reason that that would change. You look at the past three or four years on DRB, the ordinance was ignored, ignored. And things were done in the uptown historic district that were violations of the ordinance. So don't tell me with a new, looser, more compliant, less controlled process that that's gonna get better. It's just not believable. And when there's an alternative available that would prevent it from happening. Okay, and you can't deny that the residents have, almost unanimously have the desire to preserve their historic district and, and, and go forward with it. That's, just everybody mentioned that too, that that, that that could happen, that it's not gonna look that way going forward.
Why won't it? Because the way that, talking with Mr. Hutchinson, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Reed, you were wrong, flat out wrong.
How am I wrong?
Because we were setting this ordinance up so that they're not taking away the historic district. There's gonna be skylines set up that have to meet certain things. Yes, it's not gonna have to meet the historic district areas, but we're looking for a way that we can keep that same look downtown.
That, that's your opinion, I'm not gonna argue with you.
And your opinion is in your statement as well.
That's, I have a different opinion.
What Mr. Daly is.
I have history with this for four years.
Mr. Reed, the reason why Mr. Daly and others are getting upset is you consider everyone else's an opinion and yours a fact. And that is like overarching the frustration over the last years of this. Is that when it comes out of your mouth, you believe it to be fact. When it comes out of our administration, your fellow council members, anyone else, it's an opinion that's wrong. You say we'll be removed from the process, hold on, hold on. No, 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 I've sat here and just got grandstanding on, I'm a grandstand guy. You say we're removed from the process. I'm removed from being able to write ordinances to change things?
Ordinances you can do.
I, I'm removed from approving appointees to the planning and zoning? I'm removed from sunshine laws that have planning and zoning posted meetings that are public records? To say that I'm removed is an insult to my position, your former, former position, and all the rest of ours.
Mr. Terry.
Mr. Reed, saying that and then saying we will destroy, I can, I can fire Ms. Lupton if I don't like what she's doing. I can fire Mr. Hutchinson. To say that, to say we're removed is just an incorrect fact. And that's not an opinion, so number one. Number two. I ask, you gave very many reasons why you personally may vote against this. I ask, is there a reason not to consider it on the recommendation that was handed to us from planning and zoning? You haven't answered that question once. So, part of me just wants to say, this problem goes away in a few weeks and we can vote on it, or, and we can vote no on it, guys. We can vote yes on it, we can vote change, twice that, this is a timeline discussion. So continue to tell all the reasons that you would have voted against this, but it's not gonna come up and we're gonna consider it and we're gonna vote it up or down and that's what's gonna happen.
Fine, if you do it, you still, I, I'm really surprised to hear you say you can.
I just don't like not considering planning and zoning recommendations with no basis. It's really, I don't get it.
On the, on the committee by appointments. That's, I, I.
I can remove committee members, I can do lots of things.
You know, they do what they want to and the history of them is that the, what they do with them typically violates the historic district code. That's, that's, I, and I do assert that as a fact, it's not arguable even. It's, and everybody knows it. So. Let's see, one more thing. This, this ordinance will have a profoundly negative impact on the economic future of Plain City. That it's, it's, again, it's a fact, pretty close. And it's plus or minus that about every municipality that has a historic district realizes a, anywhere from a five to 35% increase in their, in their investment and their return, the merchants, the residents and their home values over communities that if they did not have a historic district. There is huge millions of dollars at stake here for the, and I, I haven't heard a really good reason why we don't need an historic district, other than the staff doesn't wanna do it. It's a lot of work for staff, they wanna make it easier for the developers to, to invest in Plain City. Yet all of these communities across the state manage to have historic districts. Their staffs do the work, their staff has a vision given to them presumably by council and the historic people in the village. And they managed to pull it off and they reap the benefits of it. You're gonna, you, if you, if you pass this ordinance, you're gonna have Plain City become targeting mediocre in terms of its impact on the tourism trade, let's say. You look at their Dutchman, okay? They have tour buses that come there just to go to their, their Dutchman. You think it's because of the food? You probably are not accurate at all.
It's a Dutchman, it's a historic district.
No.
It's arguably illogical at this point.
I'm just telling you, it's because of the image and the, and the experience they get when they go there. We could have tour buses coming to Plain City in a number of years if we target that vision and create a public-private partnership to make it happen. It would be way more desirable than having a, an average-looking uptown. But nobody's particularly.
I've walked in this fight or anything else that does, I, I mean, I've worked here almost 30 years. And downtown Saturday was a perfect example. There were thousands of people down there, I've never seen anything downtown for Christmas under the clock. I, I had hundreds of people tell me that Plain City is just gorgeous now downtown. And I, I feel like you're sitting there saying that everybody that you talk to basically doesn't like this, like, now I'm in Plain City now.
No, no, that's not what I said.
I've been in the circle society.
I said, everybody wants it preserved.
I've been here for so long, I remember those buildings were falling down, they were horrible, they were terrible. And it's just nice now to go somewhere where people wanna know that I've worked in Plain City and say how nice Plain City looks right now. And you make it sound like it's not that way down there now.
No, no sir, I did not see that, I did not see it. I said people wanted to, wanted to continue to develop that way. That's what I said, that, that if you do this. No, this, this ordinance will not require that it continues in the direction it has been going. That they, and I asked, I, you heard me ask Mr. Hutchinson directly. If, if that corner northeast becomes available and it's, and a proposal is put in, it put in to, to do a steel and glass building over there, a three stories of office tower or whatever, would that be acceptable under this code? And he said flatly and very quickly, yes. That's what, that's what my issue is.
That is not what he said, man. You can't just make things up.
I was here, I heard him.
We're on, we have video.
So what do you think he said?
He said it has to meet the requirements of the code, which, which provides that can maintain historic feel and the. and the, that has to fit the district, that's what he said, that's what the code says.
No, what he's, what, what the issue was, was the predominant theme, okay? And where it applies and how it applies. And that it was very subjective, and it's gonna be used by whoever wants what, coming before these committees to, to, and it's so subjective and so undefined that anything is gonna fit in that theme, and they're gonna use it, just as they have the past four years.
Okay.
With applications that come to DRB. There, there's no, so, no expectation that it's gonna change. Anyway, those are my really three big issues with this thing, and any one would be enough to, to, to not rush into passing this and fixing some of the, some of the really bad things in there. Um, so my proposal is to, to put together, to do what council asked staff to do, and that was to fix the historic district code, chapter thirteen twenty-seven, and make it work. That was the, that was the base request here, it wasn't to get rid of it. So, uh, I'm proposing that we, that we, that we postpone consideration of eleven eighty-five point oh six and allow the development of a alternative proposal that keeps the historic district but fixes the problems in it, so that, so that it's more rigorous and more controlled and applications get vetted for violations of the law before they come to any of these commissions. That way you can keep your historic district, have control of it, have some discipline in what's allowed in there, which this eleven eighty-five will have no discipline in it at all. So if you would, um, consider that, uh, putting in, uh, the opportunity postponed it until February where a, a, a valid and certifiably, uh, useful version of the chapter thirteen twenty-seven could be created, you'll have them side by side. And believe me, I think most people think it's much better to have a historic district code than to not have it. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do want to say one thing, everything from Planning Commission does come to council. They're a recommend, recommending body, and everything comes to council for final approval.
That, that is, that is the current way it's done. With these applications or approvals by, by zoning and planning and zoning, applicant that used to go to DRB will go to planning and zoning.
And then it comes to council.
I, how is, oh, it doesn't say that in the code, and I, I, no, no, if they approve it, it's a done deal. Council doesn't have to vote on it. I, I'm sorry, you misunderstood that.
I full-heartedly agree with you, Mr. Reed, that we should not talk about this again until January.
Okay.
So, so I would like, it would take five to modify a recommendation. We should, by the time we are voting, there's gonna be other members that might have other opinions that would not want to modify or would want to modify it differently. A conversation about this, I fully agree, at the first meeting, work session in January, it makes a lot of sense. And then we can have the readings, hopefully in January. It doesn't, the public hearing doesn't turn a pu- uh, pumpkin. However, if we do revise this and we don't get five votes, we have to send it back and have another public hearing. So I fully agree with you, Mr. Reed, we should not talk about this again until.
First of all, please don't be worried about the timing of it, it can always be resubmitted at any time.
Yeah, I just don't want.
It can, it can come back in the door the same way it came on the last time.
Um, either way, our DRB has, a few members have turned out, so we're, as some sort of solution won't be, be in the meantime to property intercourse, submit, stop submitting applications.
Right, we don't want to, we don't want to halt any momentum we have downtown. And that's why we started this.
Sorry, I don't see it, I don't.
Let me talk, let me talk.
We're not having this.
Yeah, we, the whole thing, this whole discussion was about a timeline, and we've gone off the rails. I mean, we're not even in the same state here, we're all, you know, let's get back on what we were talking about. The timeline of this, and as, you know, as we've discussed, we'll bring this back up in January.
Are, are you receptive to getting alternative legislation that saves the historic district? Anybody? So you're not interested in the historic district at all in saving it?
That's not.
Yes or no?
One, one way to pose a question.
Yeah, that's, you posed a question, and you, and then you, and then you made.
Well, okay.
Based off of our not, I answered your question.
Whatever people have to say about.
What I heard, what I heard from Mr. Terry was, he would like to postpone the discussion until we have new council members who can weigh in on this.
Which was your original suggestion, like, two weeks ago. I agree with you, man. Well, we take the win.
The current, okay, this happened within the last week.
Our, our conversation on this is, is now done. Uh, we've, uh, we've, we've talked about this, uh, timeline and decided that we're going to put it on for the first of the year, and we have no other discussion items and no unfinished business, no new business. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, all of us.